All right, with that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. All members are appearing remotely and the meeting is being recorded. If there are any technical issues or anything else where we can't get to any item on the agenda today, they will be administratively continued until April sixth. So first up, is there anyone here who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? There'll be opportunity for public comment for agenda items, but if there's anyone who would like to address us for an item that's not on the agenda. You can raise your zoom hand or turn on your camera and raise your actual hand or star nine on a cellphone or star six, you can unmute. I see nothing. All right, so moving right along. First item is the A and R for the Scallion LaPage Reservation Road property. I understand that's being continued, is that right, Curtis or Jeff?
Yes, so we received, we received word from them that they're still, they're having, they've started the conversation with DCR that they need to have. They've not yet concluded it, that conversation related to whether or not DCR would have adequate access through the proposed subdivision. It's been signaled that the, the ownership of that subdivision are not opposed to paving the road. And they're trying to determine how that's going to be worked out. Jeff, feel free to add on more.
I think it's fine. I think they're requesting a continuation to April sixth.
Okay, that was what I was gonna ask.
The one piece of information.
All right, I will take a motion unless anybody has any issues or objections on that.
I motion to, well, maybe someone does have an issue objection, I'll hold a second.
Any planning board members with any issue with the continuance? Okay. Take it away, James.
Okay, I motion to continue the A and R for Scallion LaPage Reservation Road till April sixth.
Seconded.
All right, voting to continue the A and R to April sixth, James.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And I am an I. All right. So moving right along, the continued public hearing for American Dream Realty seeking a special permit and stormwater management permit for a Dunkin restaurant at five and nine East Street. And I know we got, there's been a draft decision circulated, but there was also a drawing of some of the mitigation proposals or something that's been done. Jessica, do you want to update us on where we are with that?
Sure, no problem. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jessica Allen. I'm with our Lebec Associates. Let me just share my screen. Curtis or Jeff, if you wouldn't mind giving me the capability to do that. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I can share with you the sketch that was provided. So since our last meeting, Manny, the applicant, he met with the neighbor at ten East Street. And they had a lovely conversation and discussion about mitigation strategies. And so based on that discussion and their agreement, we have a sketch that's provided to the planning board to document what those mitigations items would be. There's three primarily. There's one is having a new driveway turnaround here. Located here, twelve feet by eighteen feet, allowing the applicant to be able to turn around in her driveway and exit her property forward facing rather than backing out into East Street. We have a row of arborvitae's that would be planted at the same time that the plantings happen for the Dunkin Donuts. So that the plantings would happen during construction. The driveway is scheduled to be happening this spring, so Manny is moving ahead with that and, and has contractors in place to have an asphalt. This asphalt turnaround installed this spring. The other planting is the dogwood right here that would replace the specimen tree that the applicant, I mean, that the butter had noted last meeting that she had taken down, that it was shown on Google Earth, but she had removed it. So the, there will be a dogwood tree that's planted here. So those are the three items. Like I said, the driveway will be going in the spring and the plantings would happen concurrently with the construction of the Dunkin.
Right. And is that a butter here? I'm blanking on the name, the ten East Street. I feel like that was Jane's iPad, but I might be wrong. If you're here, ten East Street, and you want to, if you could unmute yourself and, and answer some questions, that'd be great.
Okay.
Oh, there we go. Remind me your name again, I'm blanking on it, I'm sorry.
I'm Jane Coolus, ten East Street, East Hampton, Mass.
There you go. So you just saw the presentation from the applicant's agent, and does that sound like what you've sort of agreed to?
Yes.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Jessica, I think there was another butter right next door. Were there any conversations about that? I know we discussed a fence already as part of that, but were there any communications beyond that?
I don't believe so, unless Manny had one that he didn't let us know about. But I believe that we left it off as the last meeting is that there was an eight-foot fence and there is a row of arborvitae's going in between the proposed Dunkin and the butter on that, on that boundary. So I don't think there was any guidance to really move forward with having additional conversations.
And I think there was, there was an agreement by Manny, I think, to put the not, the signs to not block the driveways. I think we talked about that at the meeting, but I think that was everything. I do see Miss Sexton here. Would you like to chime in on this?
Sorry, I'm late. I was also thinking to, to have a do not drop blocks, do not block driveway sign as well as, I don't know if we can get this because it's not really Dunkin relevant, but a no engine brake sign would be amazing.
Yeah, I think the no engine brake is like a city ordinance kind of thing that I don't think we can put a sign up that says that. But I do know that when we talked last time about the, the fence and the plantings and the signage, I believe that the applicant was agreeable to that. So I think all of those were agreed to. So that's great if that, if that works for you. The engine brake one, I don't know what the rules are for that, other than that we can't do it with just a sign that we have the applicant put up, but you probably talk to city councilor DPW about that rule.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so I guess, first of all, I guess, is there anyone else from the public with any comments or questions about where we are? Again, you can raise your zoom hand or turn on your camera and raise your hand or even just unmute. I don't see anything. Okay, so we do have a draft decision that circulated today. Jessica, I think you guys had a chance to look at it too.
We did.
All right, and planning board has had a chance to look through it. We're gonna go through it now, but I just wanna make sure everyone has a copy of that and I don't know, Jeff, should we put this up on the screen? Is that the easiest way?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to pull that up now.
Okay, and my plan, just so everyone knows, I'm gonna go through the specific findings and the conditions, so I'm gonna try not to get bogged down too much in the language of the bylaws as opposed to the actual findings that we're talking about making. And planning board members, if you have any questions or comments about whatever I've just read, please stop me and we can address it there or we can wait till the end if you want to make a note.
So the first. This is, I'm sorry, it is posted online too. I did, I did make an effort to post this online as available. And I was gonna ask, we, we don't wanna necessarily use the chat for conversing during the, during the meeting, but maybe I could ask if Curtis could. Curtis, would you be able to put a link in, in the, in the chat so that if someone wanted to click it, they could get right to the document, but I'm gonna share it on the screen too.
That's great. Jeff, can you do it one page so it's a little bit bigger?
Yep.
And then the findings actually start on page five, at least on my printed out version.
Having an issue with my laptop and the mouse, so everything's going a little slower.
Jeff, you want me to screen share after I've sent the link?
Um, yeah, I, it'll be great Curtis, because I'm having a tech, I can't wait. Curser, and I'm gonna open this up and I'll make any real-time edits, but yeah, I'm having something going wrong here.
Yeah.
Right, getting there now.
So what I'm going to do is I'm actually gonna link the whole, I'm gonna take the full URL for the folder for tonight's meeting, which includes the sketch, the draft decision and the planning board agenda for tonight. The draft decision is the Word document that's going into the chat here. It's very visibly labeled as such. Anybody clicking that link can go right through. All of our files can be found online at easthamptonma.gov slash planning board.
Excellent. All right, there we are. That looks like it works, Jeff. So first finding, this is under section ten point five, Commercial Development Performance Standards, first one related to parking. Planning board finds that the subject parcel meets the city zoning definition of a corner lot and therefore the front setback is applied to the East Street and Route five sides of the parcel. There are no parking spaces located within the front setback along East Street. Along Route five there is, and I think it should say, and unusually wide, instead of a usually right, what wide? Right-of-way easement within the property boundary that contains a gravel access road and pump station. The distance from the edge of the property for the commercial use to the edge of the travelway is ninety-five feet. This area will provide a buffer between the parking spaces and drive-through lane and Route five. In addition, there are landscape islands within the parking lot that provide additional screening. Next one involves parking with adjacent businesses. The planning board finds that this is not feasible since there's no directly adjacent business to the subject property. Next is trip reduction plans, which is not applicable as the planning board finds that the project does not request a reduction in parking requirements and meets the off-street parking requirements for drive-in or drive-through restaurants per table ten-three. Architectural design. Planning board finds the revised building elevations dated December eighth, two thousand and twenty show a building design and character that is compatible in style and scale with other similar commercial uses found in the highway business zoning district. The elevation show variation in the roof line and architectural detailing such as water table, cupola and porch entrance. The building will utilize fiber cement board siding and muted colors. This exterior design is in keeping with the New England Architectural Vernacular applied to a commercial building in this section of East Street, which is own highway business but containing mostly residential uses. Outdoor lighting. The planning board finds that the revised photo photo metrics analysis, do we need photo there too, or is just photo metrics analysis, I think, Jeff? Utilizing fifteen-foot pole-mounted lights will be shielded and will not cast beyond the property lines except for the north boundary where there is minimal spillage. Curb cuts. Planning board finds that the project includes only one curb cut. The total width of the curb cut was increased from thirty feet to forty feet to accommodate needs of the fire department. An additional exit lane was added. The width per lane is less than the maximum of twenty-five feet. Driveways. The planning board finds that as identified in the traffic impact study, the site distance between the driveway curb cut and Route five is two hundred and eighty linear feet and is sufficient for the site and use. Pedestrian and bicycle access. The planning board finds the existing sidewalk on the subject property will be upgraded and expanded within the right-of-way to meet the existing sidewalk network along Route five and will provide pedestrian access from adjacent properties. Large parking areas. The planning board finds the largest parking area in the proposed project spans twenty-four feet across and the project contains six landscaped islands within the project area. Three trees at two to three-inch caliper are proposed, which exceeds the minimum. Exposed storage areas and machinery. The planning board finds that the applicant provided adequate means to screen the dumpster through a fenced enclosure. The west property line will provide screening through the installation of an eight-foot solid vinyl fence with a row of emerald green arborvitae. Landscape areas. The planning board finds that all plantings will be maintained to the above standard. Curb cuts. The planning board finds the number of curb cuts is minimized to one which contains an entrance land, entrance island?
I don't know what that is.
Supposed to say lane.
Entrance lane, okay. And left and right exit lanes, excellent. The curb cut design was revised to incorporate the needs of fire department vehicle access and was located as far from the Route five intersection as possible to reduce interference between cars queuing on East Street with those entering and exiting the property. Landscaped buffer strip. Planning board finds the area of land adjacent to East Street will be planted with grass to prevent a traffic visibility hazard. The site contains other landscaping features at the corner of the property facing Route five. Traffic impact statement. The planning board finds the applicant met this provision through the initial traffic impact study dated July, dated June, two thousand and twenty, along with its revisions. Planning board finds that because the project incorporates improvements at the intersection of East Street and Route five, it will minimize the impact on traffic and safety in the area. Pedestrian bicycle access. The planning board finds the existing sidewalk on the subject property will be upgraded and expanded within the right-of-way to meet the existing sidewalk network along Route five and will provide pedestrian access from adjacent properties. Additional traffic impact statement. The planning board finds that this project did not exceed ten thousand square feet and it did not require additional traffic plan elements. Trip reduction plan. The planning board finds that the proposed project did not constitute a new building or use of more than ten thousand square feet. Missing feet there, Jeff. And as such, did not require a trip production plan. All right, section twelve point seven findings for special permit. First one is conformance with the provisions, the ordinances of City of East Hampton, general laws in Massachusetts and state and federal regulations. The planning board finds that all applicable regulations of the state and federal government shall apply and be met by this project, including but not limited to building code, architectural access board and Americans with Disabilities regulations. Protection of city amenities and abutting properties. The planning board finds that the historical commission issued a demolition delay decision for the existing single-family dwelling until or if the project secures a special permit. The planning board finds the special permit is further conditioned to, and we need to there, Jeff, to prevent unnecessary demolition of the structure unless the project secures finding, funding for the associated intersection improvements. The planning board finds that if the project proceeds, the demolition of the structure meets this provision so that it would not be removed if the project fails to materialize. Traffic and safety impacts. Excuse me. The planning board finds that because the project incorporates improvements at the intersection of East Street and Route five, the project will minimize the impact on traffic and safety in the area. The board finds that the project will upgrade the intersection of East Street and Route five with a traffic signal, which is expected to include a three-phase actuated signal with a phase for northbound and southbound traffic, a phase for eastbound traffic and a push-button actuated exclusive pedestrian phase. This project under the jurisdiction of Mass DOT will improve the level of service for left turns from East Street onto Route five from an LOSF to LOSE. The board finds that the project mitigates potential backups on East Street at the entrance by providing extensive onsite queuing for vehicles waiting to go through the drive-through. The board also finds that the installation of a painted roadway markings in East Street indicating do not block the box will alleviate delays or challenges for the owner of ten East Street to exit onto East Street. Methods of disposal of sewage and refuse. The planning board finds that the project includes a property, a properly designed and screened refuse area and all subsurface drainage will be captured in the system designed in accordance with the East Hampton Stormwater Ordinance. Mitigation of adverse impacts on the city resources. The planning board finds that the project includes a revised vehicle entrance to meet the access needs for the East Hampton Fire Department and emergency vehicles. Provision for off-street loading and unloading. The planning board finds that the site development complies with the zoning ordinance section ten for off-street parking and loading. The site also allows for safe vehicular access along East Street and for pedestrian access along East Street to the existing sidewalk on Route five. Table ten dash three requires one space per eighty square feet of gross floor area, therefore for the proposed, where is that comma supposed to be, Jeff? Is it eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three square feet? Does that sound right?
The building is not eleven thousand square feet.
Very big Dunkin Donuts.
Yeah.
I think Jeff's having the momentary problem with his computer. I think his signal is that he has received this communication and.
All right, we'll fix that. The required number of parking spaces is twenty-three where twenty-three are provided. Additionally, the proposed drive-through will accommodate twenty-plus vehicles within the dedicated drive-through lane. Five off-street stacking spaces are required by zoning. The interior traffic and pedestrian circulation have been designed to minimize conflict and promote safety at this intersection. The site will be accessed by East Street with one proposed curb cut. This will allow for two-way traffic. East Hampton zoning requires the entrance be no closer than fifty feet from the intersecting street. The proposed curb cut is located two hundred and eighty-five plus feet from the intersection of Route five and East Street. Efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape. The planning board finds that the proposed landscaping and buffers are designed to effectively screen their side rear lot lines as required in section ten point one four eight of the zoning ordinance. Screening of the dumpster has also been provided. The board also finds that the project includes certain off-site improvements at ten East Street to create a vegetated buffer from exiting headlights. Minimization of removal of existing vegetation. The planning board finds that the project will include the removal of mature vegetation at the rear of the property and that the replacement plantings are consistent with the commercial development standards found in section ten point five of the zoning ordinance. Consistency in the development respect to setback area placement of parking. Planning board finds that the setbacks and placement of the new building and associated parking are consistent with the highway business zoning district. Further, the placement of the parking to the side of the site rather than the front of the building and the incorporation of certain building materials and architectural features makes the views appear more in keeping with the neighborhood while also redeveloping the property into an updated gateway to the city. Measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater. Planning board finds that the project involves the construction of one new building and associated driveways and parking areas and the stormwater drainage system and management plan is designed to reduce the peak discharge range from the two, ten and one hundred-year storm events. Overall, the proposed site improvements will maintain the general drainage patterns of the site while improving water quality and reducing flow rates. Constitution of nuisance. The planning board finds the overall use of the property as a drive-through restaurant as designed is compatible within the East, East Street section of the Highway Business Zoning District. The project includes an eight-foot privacy fence and screening to mitigate noise impacts on the property to the west and includes screening, vegetation and driveway improvements to allow for forward-facing exiting from the property across the street at East Street. And stormwater management permit. The stormwater runoff from the proposed buildings and paved areas will be collected in a stormwater management system incorporating Mast DEP MMPS, including deep sump hooded catch basins, two proprietary sedimentation devices, undergrad conveyance piping and a subsurface infiltration basin. The system will collect, convey, treat and attenuate stormwater runoff from the proposed impervious areas. In accordance with section twelve point seven-nine of the East Hampton City Zone, City Ordinance and review letters issued by the city engineer, the planning board found that the submitted stormwater drainage report and management plan dated April, two thousand and twenty and revised September second, two thousand and twenty satisfies the following requirements. The stormwater management plan is consistent with the purposes and objectives of section twelve dash seven-six. The stormwater management plan meets the performance standards described in section twelve dash eight-one to the maximum extent possible as listed under section twelve dash eight-one A seven for redevelopment project. And the stormwater management plan meets the design requirements in section twelve dash eight-one. Planning board members, any issues with any of those findings or any of that language? All right, so then we get to the conditions here and I'm hoping either Jessica or maybe Jeff Bandini can walk us through exactly what these are. I think this sort of explains what we talked about at the last hearing, but I just want to understand exactly what they are, so. The first condition seems straightforward. The project shall include as an integral, integral component, the completion of a Mast DOT permitted signalized intersection at East Street and Route five. Straightforward. Two, the applicant shall submit to the city planning department and department of public works with copies to the planning board, a cover letter providing updates on the project progress and incremental design phases at each of the following intervals associated with review and permitting by Mast DOT. Twenty-five percent divide, design, combined seventy-five to one hundred percent design and plans, specs, estimates and notice of recording of any Mast DOT permit to DHD. And there's no, any significant changes to the road intersection design plans from the concept submitted as part of the traffic operational analysis dated February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one and signal design concept plan dated January twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one shall be submitted to the planning board for review at a public meeting for determination by the board whether the changes are minor or significant enough to require modification of a special permit. So I guess with number two, and maybe this is a Jeff Bandini question, but, but, or maybe it's Jessica. What are those different phases? Can you just explain when we're gonna get a report to the planning department and, and what those mean?
Jessica, can't hear you.
I do have a timeline that I can run through, but I'm happy to defer to Jeff as the expert in the room about the Mast DOT process.
Okay, no, I'll take through that. So yeah, I mean, the first, the first step is to provide, again, for the record, Jeff Bandini with McMan Associates, three fifty mile Spanish Boulevard in Ponton, Massachusetts. So the first step in, in the process, and again, just to kind of backtrack a little bit. So we did submit a preliminary letter dated February fifth, as noted in the order of conditions that we, Mast dot is on board with installation of the traffic signal. And we provided a preliminary plan in that which the draft decision references. So our first step from our end is to submit a formal application for installation of the traffic signal to Mast DOT, which we begun the process doing so. And throughout those design phases that are mentioned with twenty-five and then the seventy-five slash hundred and then PS and E would look to build upon what has already been drafted and then sent to Mast DOT. So the first step would be to begin filling out the application, to finish filling out the application, to have a design meeting with Mast DOT to present our findings thus far and to begin actual layout of the signal design and equipment and to provide any sort of necessary design requirements from the DOT side to find out if there's any sort of pickups that would prevent us from moving forward with the twenty-five percent design. So in essence, to have almost like a design meeting upfront with them, just so we don't get too far in the process and have to make additional changes. You know, as we get through the process in terms of deciding if the equipment is sufficient, you know, where the controller is gonna be laid out, if the pedestrian accommodations are sufficient and, you know, that it meets all Mast dot standards for, you know, installation of a traffic signal. So our process with Mast DOT, you know, is involved with the application and then the submission of design documents is, is part of that. Any sort of other specific questions about the application process or timeline?
So, so that makes sense. So it looks like the, the three steps here, when you would report back to the city would be twenty-five percent design. So you said sort of preliminary process, then looks like when you're almost done with the design, you report back and say this is either done or it's almost complete. And then the, the PS and E, can you just explain, I think when we talked at the last meeting, that's sort of when the project is formalized and there's like an estimate for the cost, is that right? Like this is sort of the plan that's gonna go forward?
Right, and, and the way DOT has done a lot of their submissions is a lot of the design decisions, they like, for efficiency purposes, like to have those hashed out before even the twenty-five percent design phase. And that's to kind of save time on the backend so that we don't get too far into the weeds with design decisions that could be, that could end up changing. So a lot of what we usually end up pushing forward in the twenty-five percent design phase does end up making it forward to the seventy-five slash a hundred and then to the PS and E. The PS and E phase is, is pretty much like, like you mentioned, the final document, when the plans and the specifications as to, you know, what type of backplates are used and what kind of mast arms are gonna be used and, you know, types of equipment, what type of controller and those kind of things that we need to, you know, go through in the, in the preliminary phases to make sure that what we're proposing can be handled when we start to design the actual equipment and come up with manufacturers and things like that. And then the estimate again would be based on those specifications in terms of, you know, how much a certain controller costs versus another, what we might foresee for construction duration. You know, so how, how long we might need police detail and utility coordination and, and, and tie into existing, you know, drainage manholes and things like that. So those are the kind of things that, you know, once we get to the PS and E phase, those sort of things are finalized, but as we go through the design process, we, our plan is to, you know, have those design meetings and submissions with, with Mast DOT in order to meet those thresholds that, that the city is allowing.
Great, thanks, Jeff. And so just based on what we talked the last meeting about this, it looks like the way this has sort of been tweaked, and I think there was some discussion between the applicant and the planning department, but so I think there's probably a little more keeping the city in the loop on the process, but less of an obligation to come to a hearing. So just for planning board members, because this wasn't exactly what we talked about at the last one, but I think the idea here is that we'll have more information about what's going on, but it'll be more a status report. A status report that comes to us rather than actually having. The applicant come back and have to report in person, which I think is probably the best of both worlds for everyone involved. Okay. So next up on number three.
Wait, wait, wait. Can we, can we go back? Cause. Cause we do have some concerns about that A. So, so two in an entire, the first half I, I were okay with. It's the second piece that I'd like to talk about a little bit. In terms of. Requiring the applicant to come back to the board for modi- modification to their special permit based on any. Changes that Mast D O T makes to their intersection. So I just want to put a couple pieces of information. To you so that you understand that Mast D O T is staying within their own jurisdictional boundary. And the site itself is outside that jurisdictional boundary. So there doesn't, there isn't going to be any site changes. The site is within city jurisdiction. So, so they're, they're outside each other's wheelhouses really. So that's, I think, one important piece to, to keep in mind there. That having an applicant come back for a special permit. For a change outside the jurisdiction of that boundary. I think is concerning. Also within this, from my own perspective, you've got language in here saying that the changes are minor or significant enough. What does that mean? What constitutes as minor? What constitutes as significant enough? You know, under the forty B laws, when the Z B A reviews of forty B application, there's very specific definitions of what constitutes a minor change and a major change. And so I think this is pretty vague. And so I think that's a little bit concerning in the language here. And that, you know, if there was a modification to the site plan for whatever reason, because of a design change for Mast D O T. That would have to come back to the planning board anyway. So, you know, any change, they wouldn't be able to get a building permit. Say the driveway gets. Changed to the other side, gets changed to the route five side. There's no way that, that the applicant would be able to even pull a building permit, that they would have to come back to the board anyway. And so, so. We have some concerns about this, this provision specifically. And I'm wondering if the board would be willing to eliminate this section completely. We're happy with, with the rest of number two. And quite frankly, we're okay with the rest of the conditions. It's just this section that's a little concerning to the applicant team.
Yeah. And I, I see what you're saying. I mean, the way I imagine this is basically the same as any other special permit, where if there's any deviation from the plans that there's sort of the administrative determination by the planning board as to whether it requires a public hearing or is just deemed minor. I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, I certainly don't want to deal with the fact that. D O T says move the mast arm eighteen inches over this way. But I also think that, you know, if it's something dramatic, like. Turning it into a roundabout or something like that, that that would have a strong bearing on the traffic issues and, and would impact the site, even though it's not physically on the site. So. I mean, I'm open to a discussion about how we would do that, but I think that if it's going to be something dramatic. We would want to know about it and be able to have public input. So I don't really know how to satisfy all that.
So maybe Jeff, you can jump to the conversation we had earlier today about roundabouts and. And the data that would trigger Mast D O T to actually think about a roundabout and that this project site with its current conditions doesn't necessarily meet that criteria.
I was just saying that hypothetically. I mean, I don't, I, I mean, frankly, I, I would probably prefer. A rotary, but. I mean, it's, I mean, I'm just thinking there could be something dramatic that happens. And I don't even know what that is, but I would, if it was something dramatic, I would want to know. And I feel like we would want the opportunity to potentially have public input again if it changes.
Which I think you would know, given the submissions of the twenty-five and the seventy-five and the P S and E. I guess the question I put back to the board is. And maybe again, Jeff, if you could jump in, in terms of traffic, but how would that, how would that change any of the traffic studies that have already been done and vetted? I guess really if there was some sort of major, major. Infrastructure change, how would that really change the board's review of the special permit?
I, I'm not exactly sure, but I, I think that, I mean, like the section two up above is sort of like a notice, right? We, we find out what's happening, but it doesn't bring us back. Doesn't bring you back in front of us for us to have any input or, or change anything.
So would the board then require the applicant to completely revise a site plan based on a Mast D O T design change?
I don't know. There's. I'm sorry. I might, I might computers are going really wacky. I'm, I'm like frozen, but. There is a point of clarification, which is this, this A. It's really supposed to relate to the road, the road intersection. Design. I mean, I was where. You know, I think there's a, there is an understanding of the site plan changes that that's kind of baked into the special permit and there would, there's this kind of like automatically that. Threshold that sent would, would potentially send the site plan changes back. This was going back to the last discussion. I think, you know, the chair raised like. Reference to the plan set that we've seen today. And just having some ability to. Be alerted if, if something significantly changes. I think that we were going on the dramatic side, like a roundabout. I think conversely, like if. For some reason. The intersection is no longer viable, you know, that would be like a significant change that would come back and affect the. The actual special permit. So.
What if it's tied to the twenty-five design phase specifically somehow? Because based on what Jeff was saying earlier, really the most of the design gets hashed out at that twenty-five and the seventy-five hundred is really just to sort of. Clean it up. I would think that if, if they were going to push back on something like a roundabout. Which we don't think that's going to be the case, but if that was the case, we'd find out earlier rather than later.
I just. If there's any significant changes in connection with the twenty-five percent design report that we would determine at that point, whether it's significant or minor.
Can I respond to that, Jessica?
Sure, Jeff.
Please.
Yeah. So, yeah. You know, like I mentioned before, and Jessica just moved to a lot of, a lot of what that. Mast D O T process gets, you know, hashed out in the twenty-five percent design phase. So. I understand the city's concerned if there was some sort of dramatic change, you know, typically. Mast D O T would, you know, request or recommend a roundabout if there was, you know, some sort of safety concern at the intersection, which. The traffic study did not demonstrate. That as being a contributor to. The delay at this intersection and, and you know, our own safety analysis concluded that there was no. Safety concern at this intersection. So from our standpoint, you know, Mast D O T is likely to, unlikely to recommend that. And they've already seen our letter. They've already engaged in us with providing some level of feedback to their. Acceptance as a signal for mitigation. So it's a very small percentage. They would even recommend that. And even if there was, that, that would be hashed out prior to the twenty-five percent. We wouldn't. Go into the process of laying out signal poles and. Vehicle detection and, you know, drainage requirements and things like that. If Mast D O T was going to come in and say, you know, we think you should put a roundabout at this location. So. You know, that's, that's kind of our, you know, stance on this is that, you know, anything that's likely to. Trigger any sort of changes is, is going to happen very, very early in the process.
Thanks, Jeff. James?
Thank you, Jesse. Condition one requires the completion of a Mast D O T permitted signalized intersection at East Street and Route five. You don't need any other checks. It's already there. They have to have it in condition one. So. With regard to if they change it, so they're not doing it, that would strip section, condition one. As far as I can see, A is completely redundant. Should be removed.
Any other comments from planning board members? Okay. I mean. There is a broad requirement in number one regarding a signalized intersection. And I guess the flip side of that is if it deviates from that at some point, then you're going to have to come back anyway. So that might be more specific, but. I guess I'm okay with relying on that language. And then doing a, I mean, we're going to find out, I guess, if there's any changes as part of the reporting anyway.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
All right. Moving along, number three. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, including demolition permit for the project, the applicant shall submit to the planning board for review and approval at a public meeting information. Assurity, bond, or other documents suitable to demonstrate that the applicant has obtained and set aside funding in the amount to complete the intersection improvements based on the plan spec estimate. Stage of project review and permitting with Mast D O T along with a written anticipated schedule to. I think that two is redundant there, Jeff, for final permitting, bidding, and construction. Four, priority issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the use, the applicant shall submit to the planning board at a public meeting information sufficient to establish a schedule for activation of the signalized intersection in line with final occupancy or evidence that the signal is operational. And the offsite improvements to ten E Street as indicated on the plans prepared by R L A associates. Should be associates, Jeff. Dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one shall be completed. Five, the size and design of the building shall be strictly in accordance with the plans dated December eighth, twenty twenty, including siding type and material signs, colors, and lighting. Six, all exterior site features shall be strictly in accordance with the site plan set prepared by R L A associates dated December tenth, twenty twenty, including but not limited to the building location, parking areas, drainage, landscaping, lighting, entrance specification, screening. And retaining wall material, et cetera. Any significant change to the project plans as determined by the building commissioner shall be submitted to the planning board for review at a public meeting for a determination by the board, whether the changes are minor or significant enough to require modification of the special permit. Seven, pursuant to the approved stormwater drainage and management plan, the owner operator shall adhere to all the relevant requirements listed in the construction period erosion control plan, long-term operations and management plan dated April twenty, twenty twenty. Revised September second, twenty twenty, and shall be subject, subject to the illicit discharge compliance statement submitted with the stormwater drainage report. Eight, the stormwater. Stormwater plan, I think there. Stormwater management plan, including construction period pollution prevention and erosion and sediment control measures. Short-term erosion control maintenance and the post-construction operation and maintenance plan. Shall be managed and maintained in accordance with the plan dated April twenty twenty, revised September second, twenty twenty. Nine, all landscaped areas shall be properly maintained. Shrubs or trees which die shall be replaced within one growing season. Ten, all construction shall comply with applicable state and federal regulations, including but not limited to Americans with Disabilities Act requirement. It was an act, Jeff, and ten. Requirements and all codes and requirements for the interior operation of the use as a restaurant. So Jessica, any other issues from the applicant's point of view with those conditions?
Nope. We're perfectly fine. Yep.
Planning board, any comments or questions about either the findings or the conditions? All right. Members of the public, any comments, questions, concerns about the conditions or findings? Again, you can. Raise your virtual hand or wave your hand in the video. Ms. Sexton, looks like you've unmuted. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I was, I was looking for the little raise hand thing, but anyway. If we could just add in the, the items that we discussed at the very beginning, or when I first got here, which was a, a do not block the box, box sign in front of my driveway. Or a do not block driveway sign in front of my driveway. That would be.
Yeah. Okay. So that, cause that didn't make it into the. Plan. I'm trying to think where that references to the ten E Street.
It was early on. I think it was.
In the findings. Yeah.
Yeah.
It was tied to the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah. Oh yeah. Okay. So offsite improvements to ten E Street is indicated on the plans. And then I guess as we can add as well as the. Signage to not block the, what's, what's your address again, Ms. Sexton?
It's fifteen and I have a horseshoe driveway. So there are, there's actually two.
Yeah, we, we talked about that last time. So the, the fencing and plantings are already required through the plan. So it would just be language, Jeff, that just says. Signage at, at both entrances to fifteen E Street to not block the driveway.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant willing?
I, I think we've had a couple of agreements on that already, but Jessica, is that all right?
Yeah, I don't see that being a problem.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the public?
Yes, I have a question. Jane?
Hi, Jane.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I'm gonna, that I'm gonna also have a sign that says, do not block the driveway on my side of the road.
I think you have a whole do not block the box on your section of the street. So I think there's actual painting in the road. That people can park in front of. So I, I think you, you might have something better than a sign.
Okay, fine.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Any other members of the public? Raise your zoom hand, turn on your camera and raise your hand. Or just unmute. I see nothing. Jessica, any other questions or concerns from the applicant? Great.
I motion to approve the special permit for American Dream Realty LLC. And stormwater management permit under section twelve point seven of the zoning ordinance and twelve point seven six. With the aforementioned findings and conditions.
I'll second that.
All right. Voting to approve the special permit and stormwater management permit. James?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Harry?
I'm not voting for it.
Is that a no?
No.
Okay. Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I. And so I would just like to thank the applicant and the neighbors, these projects where people can work together, I think always end in a better spot. So thank you on both sides for working towards a goal and. We'll get this decision finalized and out ASAP.
Thank you so much, everybody. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And other business, we have a review and discussion of the cannabis delivery zoning amendment, which. We all got, I think we're not doing substantive discussion tonight. I think we're talking about when to discuss it. Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, I, you know, it, this was something that this is only amendment that got initiated through city council, their ordinance subcommittee and. It's been with them for a little while and they voted, the city council voted to. Send it to the planning board, which that is the. That's the step to initiate the joint public hearing. With ordinance and planning board. And so I, I'm just trying to build a little bit better line of communication and a little bit of process. So. City council sent it to the planning board and in the past, it's just. Popped up that you have a public hearing. So. I was kind of transmitting it over to the planning board and. For, for like scheduling purposes. I was kind of curious about, we have a public hearing. A continued public hearing already set for April thirteenth. That was that, the zoning amendment that required solar on certain buildings. You know, I think that, that, I think that's going to get continued. To, to, for the most extent, for the most part, but that would be an ideal potential. Night to hold this public hearing. It gives me another couple of days to post a legal ad. And I think because ordinance is already. Queued up for that date, it would be just a little bit more consolidated that way.
What was the date you sent?
April thirteenth. And we already have it on our calendars because we're already doing that solar one anyway. I don't, I don't think we need to vote for this, right, Jeff? It's just administratively going to get scheduled and you'll publish notice.
Right. It was just to give the board the awareness that this is coming down the, the pike, so to speak.
Okay.
I'm disappointed. I came ready to, you know. Guns blazing here.
Well, the good news is.
I gotta wait till the thirteenth.
Now you got, you've got two full weekends without a planning board or two full weeks without a planning board meeting. Our Tuesday nights are free for a couple of Tuesdays. Chris is disappointed, I know.
I'm so sad.
We can do it anyways. Should we just get together for a social zoom on a Tuesday night?
No, no. No, no.
It's actually illegal for you to do that.
Yeah. Well, two of us can.
All right. That sounds good. I guess that's it. This was a quick one. So, yeah. Oh, sorry, Harry, you got a question, comment?
Yeah. Why can't we talk about this?
He's disappointed too.
I mean, we can, but, but we're supposed to have our meeting with ordinance subcommittee. So I, I don't know that it does much good to talk about it now. To be honest, I didn't actually even look at the language in it. But I think that we. We have to hash this out with ordinance anyways. So I'm not sure that it does much good for us to do it on our own because they're the ones that actually go back to the city council and. Make the law.
It's a lot easier having a conversation with the planning board without those other three individuals. We'll put it that way.
Well, I wonder, I'm not, I don't know about that, but what I, I do know is they are the ones who put out the draft, right? Is the draft locked as to what comes to us or? as to what comes to us, or do they have the ability to modify it? Is it possible we might get an update of the draft before our two weeks meeting and would it come from them?
No, I think generally at this point, it's at least locked, having left their committee going to the planning board. So I don't, I would say there's no changes in between now and then. You know, Jesse, it depends on how much, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to hear discussion. It's something that we would want to reiterate, you know, for the public hearing once it's set, but Jesse, I'd kind of defer to you and how, how, what you want to do there. It's on the, it's on the agenda, so technically
I have a point.
Be discussed.
I want to make one point before you make that decision, Jesse, if that's okay.
Please.
But if we, clearly, there's a few things we want to say. Harry has some, I have some, and others I'm guessing do as well. And it might help the zoning board, if they were to refer back to this, to have an idea about what points we might want to discuss so that we can more thoroughly, you know, rebut and dive into them if we were able to point out an item or two that, that came into question. I'm just saying it may help them better prepare, because they're the ones that drafted this. Am I right, Jeff?
Well, it's, it's not the zoning board, it's the, um, ordinance subcommittees.
It's the zoning order, yeah, it's Salem and Owen and
Yeah, you got the folks, right. The zoning board's the other planning department.
Yeah.
I think if you think about the line of communication as moving forward, like forward conversations, like I don't, there will be no communication back to them at this point until, like, when you all convene as the joint public hearing, both bodies can communicate about questions or concerns or requests for changes. I won't be able to, I don't really have a mechanism to go, like, anything that we discuss now, it could be just for educational purposes, kind of to get
Well, I mean, they, they see East Hampton media, this is posted to East Hampton media, they can surely see that it was brought up and discussed and check it out.
I mean, I guess we could, we could also put it on, I don't know what else we have on the sixth, but we have a meeting the week before this, that if we wanted to, we could prep for that and have a discussion there just between us and, and share that Zoom link or the, the YouTube video afterwards with ordinance and they could look at it. I'm, I'm just, I'm weary of like, wary of repeating ourselves again, because
Fair enough.
They're, they're the ones with a vote on the actual bylaw. We just sort of
Yeah, we're the talkers.
So, I mean, I, I would prefer if we just do it on the thirteenth, but make notes of what you want to say.
Yeah, let's go guessing.
What are you gonna do?
Let, let's talk about on the thirteenth with ordinance when, when they're here. They're the ones you got to convince.
I'm not convincing anybody of anything.
Okay.
And Harry, if it's
There's absolutely no reason in the world that we can't give up some of our viewpoints on what's going to happen on the thirteenth.
There's no reason we can't. It's just that we would be repeating ourselves and, and, I mean, if we want to have a discussion about it now or on the sixth before we
At least we'll have somewhat of an idea of what, what we all think going forward. You know?
I mean, if you, if you want to talk now, you can. I mean, it's on our agenda. I, I haven't, I really have not even looked at it. I mean, I, I have not even looked at what's proposed, but if you want to say something, you're certainly entitled to.
Jimmy, you got something to say about this? You're gonna be on board. You, you'll have a lot more detail than I will.
Uh, you, you know, all right, I'll just do make a couple of points that they can point, that the things that stood out to me was that there are only three of the driver's licenses. There are six businesses licensed we have for the retail, and they're offering three of these driver's licenses, which creates this competition thing between them. Is it first access? There's a big question of how that happens. I really don't like us getting involved in competition between businesses. I don't think that's right. It, it's clear to me if we have six businesses that we're allowing in here, those six businesses should be able to do this if this is going to be allowed. Uh, that was a big problem for me. I have a couple others, but that one really stood out. Harry, I think you're turning
Yeah, well, what I want to make sure what's going to happen here is I want to make sure these, these people that are delivering this stuff that they buy it from one of our local dispensaries in the city. I don't want to see somebody bring in this stuff from Springfield or Holyoke or Northampton or anywhere else that's in direct competition with our dispensaries. They're going to be selling us up any stamp that we buy it from our, our own dispensaries in the, in the city. That's, that's the biggest point I want to make.
It's a really good question, Harry. What if someone in, and I'll use Holyoke as an example, not for any particular reason, but because they're close, went through their planning board, they were to put something like this in and they have a business there, are they limited to only deliver in their own community? I don't think it's even a planning pro, we wouldn't be involved if some of, that's a
I don't think, I don't think there's a limit there, Curtis.
In, in the particular, uh, my, my thought, and I could be wrong on this, I didn't think there was a delivery ordinance in Holyoke.
I'm just tossing, you know, it, it could be any community that decided they wanted to do a delivery ordinance. It's allowing the businesses in their community to deliver, has nothing to do with where they deliver.
And it also doesn't matter where they purchase from. So it, it does, it doesn't have to be an existing dispensary. It could be someone here who has a deal to go buy cannabis from somewhere in Westfield and deliver it to Holyoke, I think. I think you're just getting licensed and you're in the business where you have your storefront location, not even where necessarily you're driving.
That's how, that's how the CCC's delivery license works. The CCC's delivery license obviously doesn't care about one community versus another. And that would also seem in line with the past decisions, at least of the Holyoke planning board, which you applying that it did not have the authority nor did really have a mechanism to ensure that individual businesses were only purchasing from particular suppliers. Additionally, the CCC has made clear that they can't surrender individualized receipts from businesses that would allow us to check them on that. So the only thing we'd be able to get is when a, on a licensee comes before the, the city council, they'd have to commit voluntarily to it, and the city council would have to be satisfied that they're voluntary committal is true.
So if hypothetically, Holyoke, Northampton, some of the community that passed this, how hypothetically, could they then deliver from their Northampton, Holyoke, wherever business to East Hampton without in any way talking to anyone in East Hampton?
Yeah.
Why not?
Yeah, it's, it's literally just licensing a storefront that's running it. So you could almost think about it like, I think years ago, we did the taxi company, right? And so they're running a taxi company out of East Hampton, but they can go to Northampton and pick up a customer and bring them to Holyoke, and it doesn't matter. So it's, it's basically like that. It's the storefront business.
That's what I was thinking about this when I went through, is I was thinking, well, this never came to, I don't remember FedEx or the Amazon trucks ever coming to us. And there, there are way more of those than we're ever going to see of cannabis going up and down the streets, like way, way more. So like, these rules about regulation we're trying to put in place, come on.
Well, it's important to put it at least into two buckets. One, you know, the, and the bucket that I think we need to focus on at some level is if the business is established in East Hampton, that it would be the dispatching location, it would be the activity, the land use associated with having a warehouse full of cannabis, having a fleet of vehicles that are going to leave, come, leave, go, like, and, and that's part of the activity that, you know, the, the zoning is going to need to deal with is, are we going to allow a business to locate in East Hampton? Then they can go onto ninety-one and deliver anywhere in Massachusetts. We're not going to have, zoning is not really going to be a good solution for another company coming into town to, you know, someone's house. You know, those are just going to be follow the rules of the road and that kind of thing. So part of the zoning that we're going to look at is, is the dispatching and the operation, if it were to live in East Hampton, you know, where would it go? Which zoning districts are we talking about? Are there any other limitations that we want to be covering? I mean, I think, I, I hear Harry's point. I think part of what we're missing is kind of the presentation from, from the ordinance subcommittee as an impetus for this. Because that sounds like, Harry, you have like a, kind of a, you have like a policy question about whether it could impact East Hampton businesses, but, and that's one bucket, it's kind of a policy related ones, and the other is going to be the land use effect. So there's going to be
How does a stop and shop user P pod, is that, did it go all over the, all over the countryside, I would imagine?
Yeah, and that's the same exact thing, right? So they have delivery zones and you can call from, again, Northampton, and they'll go to the stop and shop in Northampton, or you could call from, you know, East Hampton, and they go over the line into Southampton, the Big Y or whatever, you know, for their delivery service. So or pizza places, right? All the delivery stuff. But I, I don't know that you could, that you aren't allowed to require that they purchase in East Hampton. I'm not sure if there's a legal impediment to that as opposed to maybe a policy reason you wouldn't, but
The thing is that P pod has like a manufacturing facility where they collate, they, that's the wrong word, where they put everything together. They're not really based out of each individual stop and shop. They go to them and out, just like what Jeff was saying. Whereas the pizza shop is kind of what I'm envisioning in my head, that these are going to be for our businesses, right? These are small, they might get a truck, maybe two or a driver or two. You know, and they've got rules that they put in there for what happens if they have more than six, they got to be eco-friendly, you know, once that you saw that stuff and you know, one has to be electric. But really, you know, I'm kind of envisioning these small things, not this big a, a fleet enterprise business is coming in. And I, I think the zoning does need to account for fleet enterprise business and that we need to keep a close eye on.
There's a couple details, oh, sorry, Jim.
Maybe we'll hear more about that from ordinance when we hear from
Yeah, I apologize.
No, no, it's always interesting.
I think part of it is the learning curve to understand what the campus control commission is going to have of regulations. You know, I, I was, I've been reading up on them and it's pretty interesting because it sounds like certain, there may be certain limitations that these, these vehicles carrying a delivery can only carry one delivery at a time. And if that is actually true, I, I like, that would increase the need for more vehicles. So if if you wanted to be a really successful and active business, then you can only do one delivery at a time, then you know, it's different than Amazon, which has like twenty deliveries stacked up in their van, so
That seems mostly inefficient and horribly unenvironmentally friendly.
Exactly, terrible.
Yeah, I, I'll double check that. I got, I got some homework that I have to do myself on, on brushing up, but I think there's some detailed questions about how this will function and kind of the understanding, kind of some of the framework that we have. And, and it, there's two other parts. I'll just mention this quickly. There's the warehousing. So there's a, there's a warehouse component where it would be a, a larger facility where there'd be people inside packaging cannabis, they would be placing orders, they would put in a car and they'd go. And then there's another service, more like a courier. And that, those couriers are attached to a, a, you know, they have to have permission from a retail dispensary. And so they would leave some location, whether it's someone's house, they would drive to a dispensary, pick up the product, then drive to the delivery location, and then drive back to wherever their sort of base is. So some of this is mapping out what this really looks like. And that's what we're hoping to do on April thirteenth to kind of explore a little bit.
Thank you for allowing us to get a little of that out, Jesse.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's fine. And I actually think that based, you were right, Jim, that there is a way to get this to ordinance if, I don't know if Jeff or Curtis, if it's appropriate, but if you could just shoot an email, let them know that there was a minor discussion about this, and maybe they can see decisions that we chatted about, and at least they're aware three weeks in advance.
Sure, I think we can do that.
Harry?
Yeah, doesn't one of our dispensaries get their stuff from someplace else and sell it in East Hampton?
I believe that is true.
Yeah, don't want that connoisseur, don't they buy their stuff somewhere else and bring it, bring it to the city and then they sell it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there might be more than one that grow at least some of their stuff offsite in other facilities and transport some here and take some out of here and other places. I, I, I think there's definitely a lot of overlap in that industry. So it's, that'll be interesting to see how that's all implemented. Interesting when we're doing a bylaw like this, before we have the guidance from the CCC, which will likely control what we can and can't say anyways, but hopefully we'll get that soon.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be kind of interesting to have, so have an input on this and see what they think?
Well, I'd imagine they're going to show up for this.
I can only hope that anyone who's interested in this industry will be there, whether it's INSO or somebody new or whatever.
Was this advertised on our agenda, Jeff, this discussion?
Yeah, yeah, this, yeah, this is fine. I mean, I think it's just more of understanding the communication back to ordinance, but it is, this is, yeah, it's on the posted agenda that we have.
Did Steve contact you at all about it?
No, I don't know that it's been posted like the public hearing on April thirteenth has not been advertised yet. So that would be the more formalized, you know, time to have other people involved in
This one just goes on the agenda, Jim. So it's just, it's on the website and in the town hall, but it doesn't like get sent out to a butters or interested parties or anything.
And my approach, you know, it, it, when it comes up on April thirteenth, one of the approach would be if we do not have any other engagement, you know, do we want to specifically kind of engage more input? Like, I, I, I don't have the capacity to run around and tell everybody that it's happening and ask them to come. I think we can convene on April thirteenth and determine whether that's like important or not as a step in the process. I will say that in the, there are like two or three things that the Cannabis Control Commission does establish that kind of defer to the local authority, and, and one of those is hours of operation. So they do set, I guess I don't want to be quoted, but it's, it's approximately eight AM to nine PM. Unless, unless a local, you know, municipality changes that. So it's kind of like that opt-in for something more, like if you wanted to have, have this, they could operate till eleven PM, it would have to be within our zoning, otherwise it's going to be constrained just by the cannabis regulations. So there are some things that we need to learn about the, this whole thing before, before there's a vote, obviously, but
All right, very cool.
I actually have a motion standing on the floor already.
Second by Chris. All right, motion to adjourn. Jim?
I.
Austin?
I.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
I.
I am an I. Thank you all. Have a pleasant evening. I'll see you in three weeks.